...of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all. In this whole, with liberty and freedom.
You got that right Bruce.
Alright, good morning everybody.
Morning, morning.
Is everyone that's on or there or wherever they happen to be, are they okay?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay, alright, we're gonna call a meeting to order. We're going to vote for motion for approval of the agenda, have we have it?
So moved Sandy.
Second.
Any further discussions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Forward, tender approve, minutes from four six twenty one.
I looked over the minutes, they seem to be in order, Rick Peterson.
Second Bruce.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, tender approve, are there any general public concerns by zoom helicopters? Peggy, did you get anything?
No, I did not.
Okay.
Uh, this is Mike Monson from Swambers.
Yeah, I forgot Mike had been calling.
Peggy, uh, last week about as a concerned citizen or whatever the, the public, uh, questioning portions called, I'm sorry.
You're alright Mike, go ahead.
Um, I'm kinda speaking on behalf of my parents Bruce could probably tell you more, talking to me over the last few months on and off. They have the farm that's near the Rutland Dam on the southwest side. And maybe you've already been privy to some information if he's asked, um, that the, the farmer we have that rents that, um, is getting more and more water and I'm afraid that my parents are gonna lose this, um, renter, uh, the property's getting wetter and wetter. I had witnessed it myself, but the question, uh, trying to be more brief, uh, the, the dam, I understand that, uh, it's, it operates and some things have been told me, DNR and then to Bruce and Todd Lee, um, but it sounds like there may be, you know, a need, if it's been years for some dredging of mud and stuff like behind it, if it's hung up behind it if you will, and finally getting to the gates to operate, it's backing up anyway. Uh, so that's why Bruce invited me on the call and, you know, plead my case or remember if that can be investigated. He said, yeah, if I walk across there and only get deep, deep, you probably waste deep in mud. So, uh, just a, a request, a plea or whatever, if that could be looked into, uh, dredging so the gates could actually operate more properly instead of when it's, you know, finally it gets overflowing, gets to the gates and starts to operate, uh, because of this becoming more of a wetland on that, that property, uh, just southwest of the dam area there by the conservation. So that's, that's what I wanted to kind of put before the board and request, um, and get in a big tale of woe of, uh, how this property's has kinda gone downhill along there because of the water.
Well, I know, uh, like recently Bruce has sent us a lot of information, there was some back and forth, uh, discussion with the votes that you mentioned, and, um, I don't know, that, that kinda made sense to me, uh, appreciate you bringing it up, but, um, right now, I guess I believe it actually is being looked into.
Okay, great, great, I was unaware anything's getting looked into, you're just kinda, you're just an idea presented.
Wow, that's my take, I understand that it actually has been and is being looked into, uh, from several different angles. Obviously a very slow process and very frustrating for, for you folks, but, um, yeah, from what I saw, I thank you Bruce for getting that information there to everybody, but, uh, but, you know, any other comments are welcome from the board.
Well, I know it, uh, this is Rick Peterson, um, it probably has been bad these last few years because anybody's been farming river bottom and that's had problems, uh.
Right, the, the last two were pretty wet, uh.
Yeah, so, uh, but I'm sure, you know, all the silt above the dam doesn't help the situation, um. I would like to see our weather pattern straighten out to have more of a normal rainfall here and see how it works for you. Cause I think probably a lot of the issue is just excessive amount of rain we've had the last few years.
Cause I actually talked about, well, maybe we could put tile in, the guy said, you put tile in, you need a lift station because it's like the water table's so high. Uh, he's, he's, he said, it's, it's gone a little bit more than the couple of years, but the couple of years have been really, of course, extreme. And then he's claiming that like, he's, you know, fighting like a hundred, a hundred and fifty acres out of, you know, like six hundred and seventy or whatever's along there, but, um, anyways, it's the, the tale of woe, it's, I don't know, something, it's just a personal problem, um, you know, it's the, the dam and Bruce has had more than enough of me of, you know, research DNR and, you know, the conservation with Todd's department, I'm not quite sure the property might bring it from, but anyway, um, without belaboring it, uh, it's, you know, which was once, you know, pretty prime, this struggle, and I know the two years have added to it and run off, and but if I was putting tile in, it's not helped it, I've, I've seen about thirty acres washed up personally near, uh, Georgia Avenue and, uh, Two Hundred and Fifth Road. But, so I just wanted to put the plea before the board of, you know, if it's landing up behind the dam, so the dam could work better or whatever, you know, it would really, and my parents are, you know, ladies, father's ninety-three and, so I'm just trying to help on their, their behalf of, uh, income they certainly need of this renter that, or if he's just gonna say they had enough.
Yeah, have you, uh, pursued, uh, the Conservation Reserve Program through the FSA and most of the CRP land?
That would be probably the better way to.
You're referring to CRP program?
Yes, yes.
Oh, well, I guess, I guess we could, but, um, really rather, you know, let the farmer decide how he wants to rent and use it, than to pull a property away, but, you know, I wouldn't say like, you know, last effort, but if it had to be, you know, so they have some kind of an income and they pay the property taxes, everything, you know, anything that, you know, keeps some income going and not lose the farm or anything like that kinda stuff is, I can understand the situation with them as elderly as they are and health and all that.
Uh, I, I do farm also Mike and I, I had some land like that and I think four years ago I put it in CRP and it was the best darn thing I ever done. I just got tired of fighting, fighting the mud and the water and, and your, your input costs, you know, you plant it, you get zero acres that drowned out and, uh.
Right.
I would recommend pursuing that, cause I don't think there'll be any major changes in that river in the near future. I know that DNR is doing the studies on it and stuff, but they, that's government and it moves extremely slow.
And when they don't have any funds to do it, they need it.
But they don't, the, in the future for funds, it's gonna look good with what we have facing us now, I'm sure.
It's gonna be worse.
It's gonna be worse for getting any kind of funding for projects like that. I mean, that would be my recommendation, uh, go to the SCS office and pursue the, um, CRP program.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's an option, I'll, I'll look into and kinda, you know, be ready, I guess I'd, we have to pull the trigger that way, um, uh, but as, you know, really if it would just be cleaning up so the dam can work properly, uh, if it's got all that mud and silt, um, I don't know what kind of budgets or money or all that, I'm sure it's another slow, red tape process, but, um, you know, they, they're not slow, they're not slow paying their property tax, everything else towards these things either, so, um, you're just kinda, you're kinda, when you take your contract to the world with, you, you, you expect, you know, expect it overnight, but you, you expect that to be, you know, put on mute.
Mm-hmm, and Mike, this is Bruce, I will, I will get ahold of Todd and see who he talks to with the DNR and see if there's any chance that we can at least visit with him and, uh, express your concerns and, um, I know that Todd, by reading his emails, said that, um, he's doing everything that the DNR is allowing him to do it, open it when it's supposed to be open and close it when it's supposed to be closed, so, um, but I guess we will, I'll touch base with Todd after the meeting and, uh, I have your number, I'll, and I might tell you your face on the computer so I at least know that.
Bruce, I appreciate the time you, you folks have given me and love me on the call and, you know, everybody can, uh, hear and Bruce, everything you made with, with the group, uh, they, they sent that data about they've opened the gates, but, you know, but my point is if, if the water's backed up and it takes more to get to the gate, you know, let's clean it up.
Right, I wish we could, so.
So that's, that, that we're on, I imagine, yes.
Yes, thank you for, you know, bringing that up, thanks Bruce for research into it, uh, I would have to say, uh, Rick probably brings up the most, uh, valid point in the near term would be probably the conservation, uh, Conservation Reserve Program type thing we'll hook you into, so you, maybe that helps a little, uh, but yeah, I think that it is definitely, uh, at the forefront, the best we could do, uh, on the county level.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I'm gonna, I'm certainly doing this, you know, giving the opportunity to, you know, make the request and go forward, so, uh, alright, I think, I think that we'll work very much for that.
Thank you for your comment Mike.
Well, you guys have a great day Bruce, uh, personal thank you, uh, to you.
I, I'll try to get some information, we'll, we'll visit in the next few days.
That's, that sounds very, very fair and promising, okay, I'll, I'll, uh, leave your call and, um, again, uh, thank you, hope everybody stays safe and, um, everything goes well your way, it sounds like the weather's nothing to be cheerful about, so.
Well, we didn't get near as much snow as we did north, so we're thankful of that, we, we just got a little dusty, we're good.
So I'll probably hear, I'll probably hear from the farmer house coming down, pushing off in the north, so.
Alright, have a good day, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Yeah.
Mike?
Mike.
Yes.
Alright, movement's forward, tender wise, uh, we do have Dan, at least I can see him, so, still there, uh, there, we got, uh, P. B. Boucher Number Two, Mayor Manbridge, last time.
Yes, good morning.
Morning.
Morning Ben.
The, uh, the first item that I've got on the agenda is a, uh, approved pay voucher number two to Mayor Manbridge. This is for, uh, bridge number fifty-one up on Virginia Avenue, a majority of what this is, is, uh, additional removal of structure. They've got, they're down to one abutment for removal left, um, and to pay for stockpile materials for the H piles that they've already purchased.
Yes, the man, the amount of fifty-three nine fifty-three thirty-four?
Yes, that's correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the pay voucher number two to Mayor Manbridge for fifty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and thirty-four cents. I was up there and looked the project over here a few days back and that's about what they got done, the way it looked to me.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, pass it, no, we have, uh, three, uh, for CJ Bud.
Uh, this is for, actually for next year's, uh, bridge replacement project.
Oh, fine.
This is to replace, uh, a bridge, uh, southeast of, or on Washington Avenue. This is bridge number ten on Orange Victory, but this is a funding agreement between us and the Iowa Department of Transportation, uh, that basically says that we will maintain the structure after it is put in place, um, our preliminary estimate for the project is a hundred and twenty-five thousand. My initial guess is that it will be replacements bridge with a ninety by eight box culvert. He's already got the survey done, uh, and he's starting to work on the design for it right now, but this is, uh, yeah, like I said, this is the funding agreement. That he will pay for the project.
Must be this one or that one, cause I think that's Washington.
Ben would pay for all of it.
Yes, yeah, they used to be eighty, twenty split, the state would pay eighty percent of the project and the county would match twenty percent. Now with, uh, what they call swap funding, they pay a hundred percent of this project.
That's even better yet.
Uh, calendar wise, twenty-one, or twenty-twenty-one?
Twenty-twenty-one calendar wise, uh, we're actually hopeful that we can let this in October, November, and that they can just program it into their construction schedules sometime next year.
Excellent.
Is this the bridge that's off that dredged ditch that we, uh, cleaned out here a year ago?
Uh, this would be in Norway Township between sections twenty-six and twenty-seven, so it's between Two Hundred and Sixtieth Street and Two Hundred and Seventieth Street.
Okay.
I don't believe we can clean this one out.
No, I don't think so.
I'll make a motion to approve the funding agreement to Iowa DOT.
I'll second.
I got a.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I got a question, so, so this is actually gonna be a bridge or?
All those in favor?
Wait a second Eric.
Eric, I got a question.
Oh, go ahead Eric.
Hey Ben, um, is this a, a box culvert or is it a bridge, Ben? Hey Ben, can you hear me?
Just, just barely, Ben.
Yeah, I, I got a question, is this a box culvert or a bridge that's, we're putting in?
Uh, we'd be looking at putting a box culvert.
Okay, I was confused cause we're talking bridge and I figured we're putting in a box, okay, that's all I need to know.
Place a trip with a box.
Okay, any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, there you go.
Okay, I'll try and give you, uh, Eric, can you, Peggy, to keep your signatures on this document?
Okay.
Yep, we're gonna take it care of this week, okay, we got time, um, then the other thing with Ben, um, we have the discussion approved call for the two county dump.
Yeah, so this was brought up, uh, last week, we had a conversation on, uh, dump truck replacements, uh, we had, like I said, we had five votes, uh, one from Don's Truck Sales for three hundred and nine thousand, uh, the next lowest was Reese in Fort Dodge at three hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars. Um, given the additional week to think about the trucks, uh, I'd like to recommend the purchase of the two trucks from Don's Truck Sales for three hundred and nine thousand. Uh, I do also understand the, the board's wishes to purchase a semi truck and trailer for the future rock hauling, uh, throughout the county, because I can also see multiple purposes for the use of this semi truck, once we, we get it into inventory, uh, I'd like to start looking at tractor trailer setups and possibly present those to a board, to the board at a later time, um, the fifty thousand dollars difference between the, the two sets of trucks could be put towards, uh, the future semi truck and trailer.
Yeah, cause I believe you could purchase a fairly decent used one for seventy-five, eighty thousand tractor and side dump or belly dump or something.
Right, and I, I talked to, uh, uh, Webster County here probably six months ago about this and they, they provided their bid tabs from the last, uh, tractor trailer setup that they bought, and they bought a brand new semi truck for a hundred and five thousand. So, I mean, state prices are, are pretty cheap, I think, it was a hundred and five thousand for the brand new tractor and, uh, the whole trailer was like fifty-three, so it was a hundred and sixty thousand for the whole setup. But yeah, I, I agree, if we can find a, a decent used one at a discounted rate that offsets, you know, what our government discount is for this equipment, uh, definitely pursue that.
Got a question Ben. This is Dave.
Hey.
Got a question for you, is either one of them trucks got, uh, good enough shape that we could take the dump box and all the gear off of it and throw on a fifth wheel?
Probably not, because the two that we're trading off are, uh, about three hundred horse.
Yeah.
Versus most, uh, most semi trucks are, correct me if I'm wrong Bruce, about four fifty, four fifty-five.
Yeah, probably.
Okay, I just, uh, just had a question, just a thought.
Yeah, yeah, no, I appreciate it.
So I'm gonna talk something out at you, I got a phone call on Friday Ben, from the.
What's that, I just, that's alright miss?
You're alright, Peggy's shutting the door, the, there's some people out in the hall, um, the guy's down on Friday evidently read the paper at the city maintenance shed, and their question was to me that they had bought, uh, International two years ago and they bought another one in the last bid, and, uh, Ross Newton said, they love it, and he said they, um, the cab's good and airtight, um, they got good horsepower and it, uh, things are close to Fort Dodge for, oh, Hollerin is where they ended up. So I guess my question is, I said, uh, if you guys like them, did you get down and look at it Dave?
No.
You didn't get down there? I didn't get down there and he offered, he offered to have, I, and I wasn't home yet on Friday when, and, and I'm not trying to throw another iron in the fire by saying, oh, now we should jump off this horse and run to, but I guess my biggest concern is, is when we have an issue with a warranty and the thing has to go from here to Fairbanks or here to Waterloo or here to Clear Lake versus here to Fort Dodge or here, that's my only concern. Um, and I, I'm gonna be, pardon my French, a pain in the butt, cause I still believe that we can make a lot of, uh, headway with a truck and trailer and get some of our other stuff done, so I'm appreciative of that, and then hopefully we can, if we get one of those, that we could put, uh, the, couple of these dump trucks in the shed, haul our rock and stuff and get some of our other stuff done, but I guess I just wanted to throw you, throw that at you, that International, according to the city employees, they love them and, uh, that's where, uh, where I'm at, so.
Uh, Ben, uh, this is Rick again, I was reading what your, your Hamilton County response was when you questioned them on their trucks, I see, yeah, cause they have some International, I'm not gonna mention what you wrote down, but, uh. I didn't, I noticed what Hamilton County's response was to what they thought of the trucks, so. I imagine that had some influence on you.
So Hamilton County has had, uh, a couple of, they've got a couple of lemons, um, you can run into it with any brand.
Yeah, you can.
I got a couple of.
I know Webster County, the reason that they're strictly MAC now is because of the issues that they had with the Internationals, they don't even quote International anymore, um, we looked at them probably, it's probably been ten, fifteen years since we looked at them, um, I, to be honest, I, I didn't even pursue it after talking to the other counties.
Yeah.
I didn't even look at the International and it's not, it's not spag on, on Internationals, um, I'm sure they make a fine truck, I, I just, I went off of, uh, issues that other two counties had had, excuse me.
Okay. Hey, uh, Eric, have we had a motion on this yet or paid?
No.
Okay, 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 well, I'll make a motion to, uh, go ahead and purchase the two trucks from, uh, Don's Trucks for the, what was it, Mount Dave? Do you have that in front of you?
Three oh nine.
Three oh nine.
I'll second that motion.
I like keeping the, the same type of trucks, that way everything's the same, I saw.
Uh, will we have a first and Rick, is there a second?
I seconded Eric.
Thanks Dave, any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Uh, motion carries. Alright, I'm just going off of the agenda, uh, I think we moved down to claims.
Yeah, we got fourteen different claims, but.
Yeah.
We're gonna turn it out and see for numbers.
I'll, I'll let you, I'll let you run the guy.
Uh, well, I looked at them and the number I came up was four three three six six seven point two four, oh man, and then drainage was thirty-nine, thirty-nine, sixty-eight. If that is correct, I would make a motion that we approve those.
I'll second the claims numbers, uh, Bruce.
Alright, any discussion on that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, claims approved. Now, we have the, uh, cooperative contract that I have with Department of Human Services.
That's something I put on, they send this to us every year, it's a standard contract for child support services, um, they require that the chairman of the board sign it and then the county attorney, this is between, uh, Webster County, Calhoun, Hamilton, ourselves, Pocahontas and Wright County. And it's a one-year contract.
Uh, anything changed from the previous year, being a one-year contract?
Not that I can see on it, I didn't go into great big detail looking through, I just had a few highlights and she didn't mention anything on the cover letter of anything that changed, so.
Okay, this is the yearly contract?
Yep.
I'll make a motion for the chairman to sign the cooperative contract with Iowa Department of Human Services.
Anything, uh, else from the board there?
I'll second it.
Peggy, we got a first and a second?
Yes, we did.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, pass it.
Okay.
Now we have the Humboldt County Health Insurance Renewal with IGHCP, as per discussion last weekend.
Yes, the board agreed on an eighty percent renewal, so there are several documents, um, that I'll need to put your signature on Eric, it's just a matter of, um, signing the confirmation of the agenda, signing the participating employer contact information, saying that, um, I have authority to look at our records if I need to, and I also have authorized Quick friend to do that, um, there's another document here, I'll get to the front of it again, it's a third-party administrative service agreement, um, these are all standard documents that we've signed in the past. We have a, a Wilmark DSC form and we, we have EBS agreements because of our agreements with EBS, um, and everything appears to be in order. I gone over this with Cindy Ellen with IGHCP, um, she filled in most of the blanks for us, but I had to go through and add some additional stuff, so I think we're all in order and ready for it to be completed, and this is our July first renewal, I'll make a motion for the chairman to sign
Okay.
the documents for Humboldt County Insurance Renewal. Hey, we have a motion Mike Sandy.
I'll second it.
We have a second?
Dave Linga.
Is there any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we have the, uh, budget amendment and we're gonna set a date and time for that.
Yes, let me grab my calendar, we usually try to do an additional budget amendment before the end of the year, I heard several departments mention that they would like to have a budget amendment, we've gotta have time to get notice out to the department, get it back to me, prepare the documents, get it to the newspaper, so I was hoping to have it to the newspaper by the end of the month, which would be, if I could get it on the thirty, I don't know, let's go into the next week.
if I could get it on the thirtieth. I don't know. Let's go into the next week. Let's set it for like April eleventh. I'm sorry, May eleventh.
Today.
Can you do it today, yeah?
May eleventh at like eight thirty-five.
Eight, May eleventh, eight thirty-five. You need a motion on that?
Yes, please.
I would make a motion to set that for May eleventh at eight thirty-five.
And Sandy, you're great. We got a first and a second on May eleventh?
I'll second.
Eight thirty-five?
We got a motion by Bruce.
Sandy seconded.
Sandy seconded.
On May eleventh, eight thirty-five? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Close?
Hopefully we're done with this and we're all together.
Yeah. Happening too.
Okay. Now, accept the place on file. The auditors quarter report quarter ended March thirty-first.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
There was a motion by Looney and seconded by Lee.
I'm kind of losing track of everybody here.
Can you hear me now?
Dave, we got a first and a second?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, yeah, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Auditors report passes. All right. Down to, uh, committee reports.
Well, I had the hourly seat meeting last Monday on a Zoom. Um, and then Tuesday afternoon, we had a, I won't call it an emergency meeting, but a mid, mid month meeting for the landfill down Fort Dodge, a regional landfill. Uh, we've had some talk about getting it reopened to the general public. And we had a lengthy discussing on it and it passed five to four, so it's a controversial subject. Um, but we did get it reopened to the landfill. They're putting safety precautions in to protect the gal who takes the money at scale. And, uh, that was about it. Like I said, it took an hour to discuss it. So, that's all I had. So the landfill will be reopened to the general public, supposedly today or tomorrow, early this week. I think that was all I had.
All right. On Friday, I had a conference call, uh, with the Edmo Board similar to yours. Took more than time than I anticipated, but we got through. That was all I had for the week.
On April eighth, Wednesday, I had a White House COVID nineteen conference call. Um, and then also on the ninth, I had a NACO, um, COVID nineteen on the aging. And they brought up some really good points on that, that we, we as a community need to, um, really, um, look out for our aging people because we need to make sure that they're staying at home. And they're recommending that, you know, churches and organizations, and I know our church has already done that. We've, we've kind of set up like a call-in tree type thing. And then we also have a committee that calls on people to see if they need any groceries or pharmacy or, you know, if it becomes serious.
Helpless.
Yeah, helpless. Yeah, basically whatever they need. And I know a lot of our churches here in Humboldt are doing that, but it's just, they were a good reminder of us just to make sure. And a lot of them, the aging, when they do get sick, is kind of fast and immediate, so, you know, they might not, they themselves be able to call, so we just need to make sure that we are reaching out to those people. Um, and then, oh, then I also had a conference call on the ninth for Iowa Workforce Development. We are moving forward with staying with our, um, Region Five. Um, we've, we've got a lot of the, um, things in place, but now the state has come in and changed some, um, things on us. And so now we're having to jump through those hoops now again, too. Yeah, we're having, we're having fun.
Back through?
Yeah. And that's, that's, yeah, okay. Wasn't that a fun conference call? And I ended up being the secretary, so let me tell you. Um, okay, and then Friday, there was also an ISAC, um, call. We had Joni Ernst on the line, um, Cindy Axne and Doug, oh, I'm going to butcher his name, How, How's Huzelman? He is, uh, um, works at the White House. He's a director, um, of intergovernmental affairs. And they just kind of went over the things that they're working on. They're all, they're both working from home, both Joni and Cindy, but they're still having a lot of meetings and they're trying to get things. A lot of the, um, CARE PAC, um, program that they've got in place are for the bigger areas. The work, it's like the rural people have been forgotten. And so they're working at trying to get more things for the rural areas and the smaller communities, because that one package is for um, communities of five hundred or more, you know, or five hundred thousand, I'm sorry, five hundred thousand. So, that doesn't include very much of Iowa, so they're working on getting more money towards the smaller rural areas. Um, and then NACO also had a, a call at three o'clock and it was, it's pretty much just going over again with the care program and what, you know, what we can do and like again, mostly for the bigger areas.
That's it. That's all I had.
Uh, Monday I had a board of adjustment meeting call. And, uh, we discussed some property up by Bowd to be, uh, variance on to let him do some mechanic work. Uh, Tuesday I listened to Senator King's, uh, town hall meeting. Um, Wednesday we had a animal shelter meeting and that got canceled. We kind of went over things on the computer, back and forth. Uh, Thursday, Friday, I got a call from the landfill in Fort Dodge and there's a couple of towns up here and they're recycling, they're putting dog crap and cat crap, cleaning out the boxes.
Oh, God.
And it's going into recycling. I've got to make a couple of calls to towns that if it continues, they are going to take it right straight to the landfill and they will be charged. So, um.
But they do know the town.
They know the towns and where it come from and they're going to charge the towns back if it continues.
Wow.
I guess they got a bunch of recycling in from over east here, town east of us that, uh, had a bunch of dog crap in it and stuff, so. I told him I would call the mayor and talk with the county over there, the city officials. That's all I had.
Hi, Dave, you just, you can't make this stuff up.
No.
You cannot make that up.
Well, he was going to call Rick, but then he said, "Well, maybe it was in my area," so he called me. And he said, "Well, we kind of split the town."
He never mentioned that in my landfill meeting either.
Dave, good luck with that. Uh, the past week committee was, I did have an LEC meeting on Monday the sixth. Uh, we did that via Zoom. It actually worked pretty well. That was the only official meeting I had this past.
Anything, Peggy?
Nope.
I do one quick thing. Peggy, I just noticed in our Iowa County magazine, we're getting a little pub from Humboldt County here. We got, uh, Peggy and the Erickson girl that are on the front page. And then if you open it up, they have a little bit of
Yes, she got a nice, nice scholarship.
She got a scholarship and, you know, we always sit down through those meetings and it seems like you try to maintain your awakeness, but this year when we had one from Humboldt, it was a nice thing that we get a little pub up here once in a while, too, so. Just for you, Peggy, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome.
Does Kathy get one of these?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to, okay.
Couple things for me, and I just, I told Sandy this before, but I want to tell Sandy again, thank you for listening in on the myriad of, uh, calls that are out there. Just, you know, catching any tidbits of new information. Thank you, Sandy.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Um, Peggy, I, for you, is there anything, uh, I know we have some stuff out here that needs signed? Uh, is there anything that you cannot sign with my stamp? I can get it out there. I have a feeling I will be in town this week, maybe doing a little bit of stuff for that, get some stuff signed.
I can get everything signed with your, your stamp unless you want me to hold it for you.
Peggy, again, here, I can hear everybody's grave, like if you're, uh, mortal.
I can get everything signed with your stamp unless you want me to hold them for you.
Oh, there you are.
I can get everything signed with your stamp unless you want me to hold them for you.
It's entirely up to you. Like I said, uh, if you can stamp them, stamp them to keep the things moving along. We don't want to sign it and we had discussion on, so I'm just fine with that.
Okay, okay.
If nothing else, I'll make a motion adjourned.
I'll second.
No, that's okay. You get.
Are we here? All those in favor?
Aye.